So we will call to order the full city council meeting for May 17th, 2022. The clerk will call a roll for attendance.
Anderson Burgos? No. Bartley?
Yes, here.
Gibner?
Here.
Jordan?
He'll be late.
Maldonado Velez?
Here.
McGee?
Here.
McGivern?
Here.
Murphy Rumbaletti?
Here.
Coelho? Israel Rivera?
Present.
Jenny Rivera?
Here.
Tomlin?
Here.
Bacon?
Here.
Please stand for the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic which stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, liberty and justice for all.
God bless America.
And the City of Hoyo.
And the City Council.
And the Finance Committee.
Yeah. First, before I get, I'm gonna, before I turn over to Counsel Bartley, one is, there's some background noise there. We did pull the name, Counsel Maldonado Velez will be voting first when we get to roll calls. Two, want to send a happy anniversary out to Jeffrey and Juan, that's why they are not here tonight, so I will be playing the role of Jeffrey as well as up here, so we're gonna do the best with looking at the computer and trying to monitor everything. If I miss you, just yell, and I'll do my best to get to you. With that, I want to turn over to Counsel Bartley.
I'd just like to suspend the rules, Mr. President, take a moment of silence if we could, for a colleague of ours, Gina Latellier, who was a long-term, I think seven terms, Agawam City Councilor, she passed away last week, a cancerous, single mother, wonderful lady, attorney, and a friend of mine. Thank you.
Please, a moment of silence. Thank you. We do have two items laying on the table. Counsel Jordan did reach out to me, he is running late, he'll be here probably within five to 10 minutes. He did ask that if we could leave those and come back to those, because he would like to talk on those. So with that, I'd say go to public comment. There was no one signed up in the room for here. That would be to then go to online, is there anyone online who is looking to speak? I did not see anyone, so then we're off to communications.
Mr. President, could we take, suspend and take three, four, and five as a package? And then, once we do that, I would make a motion, since they're all reappointments and they're upstanding citizens, that we vote to approve.
Second.
Second.
Motion is, okay. Motion is suspend the rules, take up three, four, and five as a package, all those in favor. All opposed. Three is the reappointment of Antonio Quintenses Albano, 27 Linden Street, which would be to Hedic, and that is a three-year term, which expires June 30th, 2025. The second one, oh boy, it's Counsel McGivern, just kidding. Reappoint also to Hedic, that's a three-year term for same timeframe. And the last one is for Carl Eager, same for Hedic, three-year appointment, June 30th, 2025. Counsel McGivern is going to...
Actually abstain on all three, Mr. President.
Yep, he'll abstain on all three. So this is to confirm the reappointments, all those in favor.
Aye.
All those opposed.
And a motion to take up six, and then refer that to the Committee on Public Service.
Second.
Second.
For item six is to send to public service, and this is to appoint former Counselor Glassmore Martinez to the Hoyo Council authority, which would be a, her term, she's finishing out a term which will expire April 1st, 2024. Yep, I'm just making sure I read that right. So that's to public service, all those in favor. All opposed.
Seven, Mr. President, if we could make a motion to receive, please.
Second.
Second.
This is the regular minutes of the meeting for May 3rd, 2022. I know Counsel Jordan has pointed out, if we should receive and adopt these, because we're making them final.
Well, if he's here, if he's here, he can make the motion he wants, but he's not here, so.
Nope, I'm just putting it out there, so motion is just to receive so far, all those in favor.
Aye.
Aye.
Make a motion, take number eight off the table, and I think that goes to Finance.
Finance.
Second.
Yep, so this is from the Water Department, which is from Dave Conti regarding a letter informing the Board of approval to increase the water rate effective July 1, 2022, so that would go to Finance, all those in favor.
Aye.
All opposed.
Let's see, it's for nine, 10, because suspend the rules, and motion to receive them both, please.
Second. Second.
Motion to suspend rules, take up nine to 10 as a package, all those in favor.
Aye.
All opposed. Nine is from also from, from Dave Conti, a letter regarding the water treatment facility, and it's the reservoir tour. 10 is the Public Works Sewer Commission Stormwater Authority minutes, so both is to receive, all those in favor.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed. Motion to take 11, 12, and 13, and 14, send to ordinance.
Second.
Motion is take up 11, 12, 13, and 14 as a package, all those in favor.
Aye.
Aye.
All opposed. 11 is the outreach meeting for 15 Main Street. 12 is another meeting for 73 to 79 Sergeant Street. 13 is for 81-85 Sergeant Street, and 14 is for 109 Lyman Street, all those to ordinance, all those in favor.
Aye.
All opposed.
Mr. President, can we suspend the rules and take 15 and 18 together as a package? They're both new special permits, and we could ship them off to DGR, and I'm sure the Chair, the Chair will set up a time for a public hearing for those.
Second.
So motion is take up 15, suspend rules, take up 15 and 18 as a package, all those in favor.
Aye.
All opposed. 15 is a petition for a special permit for multifamily dwelling in the IG Zone at 81 North Bridge Street, and 18 is a new special permit for a car wash for Gary Rome on Whiting's Farm Road.
Mr. President.
Both to DGNR.
Mr. President, just under discussion briefly.
Sure.
The reason, this is Counsel Lacy's idea, and it was a darn good one, several years ago, when, just to give ordinance committee half a break. So a lot of these special permits, Mr. President, go to the DGR Committee, and the DGR Committee handles these on a public hearing, and because ordinance can just be so overwhelmed at times. So I just want to state that for the public record, because it's just a reminder, thank you.
15 and 18 to DGNR, all those in favor.
Aye.
Aye.
All opposed. 16, petition for a new special permit at one...
17 as a package, please.
16 and 17, please.
Take up 16 and 17, suspend rules, take up as a package, all those in favor.
Aye.
All opposed. So 16 was one Cabot Street. 17 is for 90 Sergeant Street, both to ordinance.
Ordinance.
All those in favor.
Aye.
Okay, President's Report, reminder, there's a tour tomorrow at the HGNE for the facility that was sent out to everyone by Jeffrey, and there was a reminder, I do believe yesterday. Few of us attended the 2050 anniversary for ceremony for Gary Rome. Counsel Bartley attended the HCC on our behalf, as well as, there was one other Counsel Bartley, I forgot, which one was there?
Counsel Playo, yep, we went.
Wasn't there another one that you went to on our behalf?
No, no, I'm going to another.
Oh, you're going to...
Do a second.
Okay, alright, so.
Do a second, that's for the United Way.
Alright, so, we've been busy, but with that, just a reminder for tomorrow, if you are attending, I know someone reached out last minute, but they should be able to go and do the tour. If anyone has any questions, you can always contact Kate Sullivan Craven to confirm that. With that, anyone else on anything we might have missed? I do want to thank Counsel McGivern and everyone who did attend the first budget hearing. I was on a plane coming back from Philly, so I appreciate it, and I appreciate all the department heads that came in, that would have been the mayor, treasurer, assessor, auditor, and tax collector to start on the budget process, so I do appreciate that from everyone. Counsel McGivern.
Thank you, Mr. President, and just noting your absence, that we received a balanced budget from the mayor, the first time we received a balanced budget, I think, in three decades. Nothing to do with your absence, Mr. Mayor, Mr. Mayor, Mr. President. If I could, real quick, the Mary Ground dedicated a plaque in honor of Jim Jakowski, our 25, 27-year president of the Board of Directors. Jim was the son of Jim Jakowski Senior, who was a former city counselor that served a handful of terms on the board, and I just thought the dedication went very well, but I thought people would like to hear about that. The Hoyo Buyer Association Tournament this year, Memorial last year, Marty Dunn is also having their annual Buyer Association Tournament, August 15th, the proceeds will benefit the Mary Ground. It's half-full with golf teams, if anybody's interested in getting a team in, just see me or contact Lisa Ball, who's the, part of the Chair of the Buyer Association herself, and we're very happy about that. When the Mary Ground was saved by Mountain Park, Marty Dunn was actually mayor of the city, and was very instrumental in putting together the Friends of the Hoyo Mary Ground in the fundraising efforts, which eventually became a not-for-profit corporation. Thank you, Mr. President.
Anyone further? With that, we'll move on to reports of committee.
Mr. President, can we suspend the rules and take up 19A, B, and C as a package?
Motion to suspend rules, take up 19A, B, and C together, all those in favor.
Aye.
All opposed. A is ordinance for a handicap sign at 107 Brown Ave, recommend that be adopted. B is for handicap sign at 204 Oak Street, recommend that that be adopted. C is a handicap sign at 60 Northeast Street, recommend that that be adopted.
And so the motion is to pass the first reading?
Second.
Motion is to receive, adopt, pass the first reading, Counsel Vacan.
These were vetted by the Disabilities Commission and recommended for approval as needed and allowed where they were requested. Pretty straightforward.
Anyone further? See no one on. So, motion is to pass the first reading, all those in favor.
Aye.
All opposed.
Motion to pass the second reading?
Motion is pass the second reading, all those in favor.
Aye.
All opposed.
Motion that the passage be ordained.
Motion that the passage be ordained, the clerk will call roll, if you vote yes, you're voting for all three.
Maldonado Velez?
Yes.
McGee?
Yes.
McGivern?
Yes.
Murphy Rumbaletti?
Yes.
Israel Rivera?
C.
Jenny Rivera?
Yes.
Tomlin?
Yes.
Vacan?
Yes.
Anderson Burgos? Oh, I forgot he's not here. Bartley?
Yes.
Gibner?
Yes.
Jordan? Still late, yeah.
Yeah, he's not here yet.
Tenyes.
You're approving approved that, 19D?
So, Mr. President, if we can suspend rules, take up 19D and E as a package?
Oh, yeah. Counsel Maldonado Velez?
Before we move on, I had a question at that, I figured you were gonna bring it up during your President's Report, but I just had a question, wondering if now's the time to discuss what has come to light with one of our colleagues within our bodies, so I'm not sure if this was gonna be a conversation we're gonna have, beginning of this meeting, end of this meeting, or is this was a conversation, do you want to have it all, I'm not sure, but I feel like, yeah, we deserve to, or we owe the public at least some sort of discourse within this body, given that what happened with the Council of Hoyo, so.
Well...
It's in the public.
The issue is, at this point in time, Counsel, nothing has come before the council. We're gonna let the law officials handle what they have to do, and we have faith in what they're going to do, in essence, to investigate and give us the information when it is ready. So at this point in time, there's nothing before the council to do anything on. So as the mayor has said, and I fully agree with his approach is, we're gonna let the authorities deal with what they have to deal with, and then they will come back to us.
Cool.
Thank you.
So my motion is to suspend the rules and take up 19D and E as a package?
Motion to suspend rules, take up 19D and E as a package, all those in favor.
Aye.
Aye.
All opposed. D is an ordinance that no trucks or trailers signs at the bottom of Michelle Lane, currently there is a no exit sign, recommend that be adopted. E is that the DPW install no parking sign within appropriate required feet from the intersection of Elm and Sergeant, adjacent to 140 Sergeant Street, to reduce hazards, blind spots, recommend that that be adopted as well. So motion is receive and adopt, Counsel Vacan.
Thank you, Mr. President, yes, the motion is to receive and adopt the committee report because the committee is recommending to install the signs, but because they are not under state jurisdiction in terms of the status of the signs, they will not be requiring an ordinance change.
Right.
But the signs can nonetheless be installed.
And I couldn't make that a meeting, so I do appreciate the adopting of it on Michelle Lane. I know I sent Jeffrey the video of it. It basically is, we gotta put signs up, because 18-wheelers are going up there and really running over trees and everything else, and it's, it really comes down to, it's a map issue on...
That was happening in Ward 5, too.
Yeah, so it's not really much we can do, other than put the sign up so that trucks hopefully don't turn in there, so I appreciate that. Counsel Bartley?
Yeah, just, just, I, just, if I can respond to that, because we, in Ward 3, we had a very similar thing, and all credit to Acting Mayor Murphy, who met with me on just off of Moss Ave, Memorial, Memorial last year for quite a while with many residents, and he, in concert with Mike from DPW, and the DPW, not Mike Mania, well, Mike Mania says, oh, Mike is the sign guy, I'm blanking his last name, but we got all signs posted all around there, Mr. President, so it, and it says, no 18-wheelers, no trucks. This is all on the Lake Streets, this is Memorial, this is Moss, this is all around Westfield and Homestead Avenue, and it's, it hasn't been a total panacea, but the amount of calls went from, you know, this to, you know, way down pretty low, so it's had a real positive effect, and again, you know, Terry, Terry and the residents up there deserve a lot of credit for that.
Counsel Gibner?
I'm sorry, I missed, what kind of sign was installed that helped?
So, like, no truck entrance, no, I forget the tur, how the sign's gonna be drafted, Counsel Bartley, do you know?
Yeah, it was, it was really one of those pictures of a, of a truck.
Right, and no trucks.
With a line through it, so no, no box trucks, 18-wheelers, that sort of thing.
Alright. I was just wondering, or my suggestion was that, I've seen signs that say, "Don't follow your GPS," I wonder if that would be helpful, because it seems like a no-exit sign should be enough to keep a 18-wheeler from turning down the street, maybe I'm being naive.
This was the recommendation from the engineer with regards to what's happening, kind of similar to what happened to Counsel Bartley, is they're just following the GPS, but when it gets, if you have the sign out front, it's gonna block them from even going up there.
The no-exit sign has the same blockage.
There's a sign up there, it says, "No exit," it's not.
I guess I'm trying to understand what the difference is between a no-exit sign and a no-truck sign.
Well, if you're just doing your GPS and you don't see that you can't go up there with your truck, you will just go...
Fair enough.
I guess for me, I guess for me, I, I don't, I don't know, I don't see the purpose in duplicating a service, but I voted for it that day, just to move it forward, but I really wasn't in agreement with it overall, just because I get the GPS piece, but at the end of the day, there's, there is already a sign there, and if they're driving by the sign, it makes you think they're not gonna drive by the sign that we put up again, too. And then the other piece is, what's gonna be the penalty if they do pull up there? Do we have a process of what the penalty is, who's gonna enforce it, are the police gonna come through? Like, I feel like we're just doing something just to say we did it, versus doing it with an actual, I don't know, with an actual purpose, but that's just my opinion, whatever.
Counsel McGivern.
Thank you, Mr. President, I don't think the purpose of this ordinance is to be punitive, it's, the purpose is a neighborhood is under siege, and it's not the truck driver's fault, because GPS is, I believe, miscalculating directions because of the way 202 runs through the city. 202 being the state highway, comes north into the city and crosses over and goes down Lower Westfield Road, all the ways into South Hadley. When 202 is returning, going south, coming across the bridge from South Hadley, it goes up Handen Street, goes all the ways up to, up higher, up to Jarvis Ave, comes back over to Homestead, and then makes its way back out to where it meets the sister part of 202, which is going north at this intersection. And I think GPS is just confusing the heck out of, out of drivers. But, you know, I don't think we have to be punitive, I think we just gotta keep 18-wheelers out of these neighborhoods. It's as simple as that. I've had them in my neighborhood, it's, it's a little scary when you look out your window and the, the truck is taller than your house, and it's a little, not just, you know, annoying and frustrating, it's a safety issue for the driver and for the neighborhood itself.
And if you've ever been up on Michelle Lane, it is a small cul-de-sac, of which they're going across the cul-de-sac and causing damage. So it is, I understand what you're saying, you know, make it punitive and all that, it's not designed to, it's kinda give a heads up of, don't go up there, because it's not the way to go, and hopefully, as Counsel Bartley has said, it did help and minimize what was going on.
And if I can follow up, sometimes there is such a thing as too many signs, but on the other hand, sometimes a couple of signs will be enough to get the attention when people are just sort of mindlessly focusing on the GPS, and I'll just point out the example of the tractor trailer that just went onto the bike path in Northampton, as an example. And so I just think, if we put up an extra sign, and it helps, great, because when these huge trucks go down these small roads, they can't even handle them, but then they have to go somewhere, so they go through everybody's yards, because they have no choice, because then they're stuck. But I just think it's one of those things of every little bit helps, and why not try? Because we ended up with a lady in our backyard trying to go to Pilzadsky Park not too long ago.
Counsel Maldonado Velez?
Thank you, Mr. President, so out of committee, I actually was in the minority, I voted no for this, and I'm so worried about no for today, so a couple reasons. One is the engineer's recommendation was, yes, we can do it, but based on the information of what's happening there, like mass that, when we approve a truck restriction, meaning like, we're gonna put up a sign that's not enforceable. Now, yes, there's a part that we can enforce, but then there's also the other part of it, where if a resident is complaining about something, and then they are, you know, calling in about trucks on their, on their road, and then they see a sign that says, "No trucks allowed," then the resident's expectation is that this truck will, I, it just doesn't make sense, it's sending a mixed signal, a wrong signal to the residents of that street, unless we're expecting to have a conversation with everyone that street, saying, yes, we're gonna put up this sign, but it doesn't really mean anything, it's just more of a deterrent, maybe. So I'm voting no for that, on top of that, I'm also voting for no, because I think it was two months ago that we approved stop signs going down and up Appleton and Ray Street, and those are still yet to be installed, so I'm gonna go ahead and assume that DPW is really backed up and adding this one, that's an unenforceable sign, just doesn't make sense to add this word to their log. So that's why I'm voting no for this, thank you.
Counsel Gibner?
I just had a quick question, so what happens when people have like a furniture delivery? They just park on the main road and walk stuff to their house or something?
No, no, those are still gonna happen, if I order something from...
So those 18-wheelers can get in and get out fine?
They, I've had an 18-wheeler for a furniture delivery, but it's not designed to stop deliveries, it's designed to stop the constant 18-wheelers that don't walk.
I just wonder if there's not like a creative way that we as a city could make a sign that we don't have to worry about being enforced, that is like the friendly neighborhood sign that's specifically a guidance, you know? It might look a little more fun, maybe students could design it or something, I don't know, maybe I'm overthinking this, but I think it could be nice to say, hey, you know, trucks will not be able to get in and out of this street, and then it's not like a state or a, you know, it's not like a DOT sign, but it's still informative, and that way we don't have to worry about the enforcement stuff that we obviously can't enforce, but, because people don't want these trucks down the street because they're ruining their property, but there's nothing legally they can do about it, so they should have a sign, but why not? I don't know. Do we have anything like that? Thank you.
Counsel Jordan?
Mr. President, again, I'm glad you used the words overthinking, you actually took the words out of my mouth. First of all, here we have a situation where, I remember Michelle Lane, I remember when these homes were put in, it's not that many years ago, these people made a very large investment, it's very, we're very thankful to have all these new residents come into the, to the city, they spent a great deal on their homes. They make a simple request, "I'd really like to not have tractor trailer trucks accidentally, misdirected, coming onto our street, which is a cul-de-sac." So guess what the easy solution is? Put a sign at the end of the street that says, "Don't do that." And we're debating that, as if there's some major earth-shattering thing here to talk about as to why we wouldn't want to do that. These people pay all kinds of taxes, and here their city council has an option to fix it, a very simple solution, and we're contemplating voting no on that. I mean, to me, whether, we're not looking to give out tickets, so therefore the issue of DOT enforcement is not really at play here, this is simply government working in a common sense manner for its residents, the people that live on Michelle Lane, who pay these taxes and are asking for our assistance. Isn't it really as simple as that? And therefore, that's why I'm in favor of giving them their sign, "You pay as much taxes as they do, they probably never asked for anything, so I'll give them a sign." I mean, this is a no-brainer to me, and I think we should do it. One, it improves safety, two, it's traffic guidance to a tractor trailer truck that probably is just going on the street by accident, and number three, it helps and makes happy residents who never asked for anything. Put all that together, I'm only too happy to vote for this, I don't see a reasoned argument against it. Thank you.
Counsel McGivern?
Thank you, Mr. President, good points are being made, but just if I can offer a couple things, and I'm not a big fan of signs, my favorite song is the, "Signs, signs everywhere, signs messing up the scenery," and I won't sing it tonight, though, Mr. President.
You can.
Not, not tonight.
I like your...
We do, it's a good point, we do have informational signs, any sign out there in yellow is not enforceable, it's an informational sign with a recommended speed. I had one on Michigan for years, that the sign said 20 miles an hour, the entire neighborhood did think the speed limit was 20 miles an hour. We couldn't make the speed limit 20 miles an hour because the state warrant would not allow us, but we still recommend it to people, this is a downslope, be careful going down, try to keep your speed at check. We have a lot of informational signs out there that, you know, say, "Local traffic only," no, and you can't enforce it, you can't enforce one of them, but it sends a message, I think, to people, especially commercial vehicles, Ward 7, that cut up Beacon Hill. Down here, we, we have School Street, where it's impossible to keep cars off of School Street, and you probably don't want to, because it would clog up other parts of the neighborhood, but we try to, to use signs to deter people, and always use signs to, to get people thinking about where they are when they're driving through this incredibly old city with a lot of narrow streets, and way too many cars parked on the street because we need the parking. It all works hand in hand, and I typically, even though I don't like signs, I like to go with the ward counselors for what they're recommending, and I hope everybody will give that some thought, that Counsel Bartley, happens to be my ward counselor, is recommending this, and I think it's a good order.
Counsel Rivera?
I would just like to make the point that it's not that we, for me, in voting against it, it's not that I don't want to provide a service to any taxpayer within the community, it's just that I feel that there are more important matters that we should be addressing at the current moment. There are other things that are currently going on, and things that are happening within city government, that we should actually be actually tackling and taking on a more aggressive... that we should actually be actually tackling and taking on, um, a, a more aggressive or progressive approach. But if we feel like that these easy pickings is something that we wanna do and take a quick W, then whatever, I guess we can vote for it. Um, something that we possibly is not enforceable. And we're feeling like we're gonna do something for a particular group of people, because it is, it's technically what it sounds like, um, from some people, uh, here on the council. Uh, I'm technically not in favor in, of doing something for a particular group of people. I would like to serve, um, all the constituents overall, within the community. Um, taxpayers, non-taxpayers, uh, anybody that can vote, per se. Um, but at the end of the day, um, where I stand, it's not that I don't wanna service the people. On my vote, it's just that I feel like there are some real-life issues that we gotta deal with. And, um, they're technically being avoided. Thank you.
So Counsel Bacon and Counsel Jordane.
Counsel McGivern took the words out of my mouth, but I think it is worth restating. I mean, we've had a longstanding respect on the council that the ward counselors are the closest to the needs and usually the go-to person for people in each of their wards. And so when it was something that was a neighborhood request, because we are certainly looking at the entire city, but we are certainly elected by the ward that we represent. So the council has usually given, um, respect to the fact that it is the ward counselor's role to be the liaison for the ward. And so that's why the people from a certain community reach out to a certain counselor, because of that organization that we have as a representative government. So I just think that that is something to keep in mind. Thank you.
Counsel Jordane.
Okay, um, let's just say everything that was just stated is true. That only again speaks to why this should be adopted. A group of residents comes forward and says, "I would like a sign at the end of the street so I don't get tractor-trailer trucks." Let's just say arguendo, that is the truthful statement. That happens every day in city government. God, I hope they would do that. We, these people pay taxes, we represent them, and yet we say, "Oh my God, a special group has come forward and wants our help." That's what we do here. That's exactly what we do here. And if we're not doing that, we've got the problem, not them. They elected us to represent them. The people on Michelle Lane are counting on us to represent them. Yes, and do we have maybe in the grand scheme of things bigger fish to fry than the poor people on Michelle Lane? Maybe. But we walk and chew gum every day here. I hope we can tackle the big stuff and take care of, of the little people, too. And when they're writing big fat checks down the city hall from Michelle Lane, they sure as hell don't see this as small potatoes. They see this as what they're paying for. And I sure hope that we're the people who were elected, and they certainly elected me, to vote, to take care of the people on Michelle Lane. And I sure as hell will do that momentarily and vote yes to give them the sign that they've requested. And I would expect every at-large counselor to do exactly that. And we can go fry the fish and all the other things that we need to do here, all the big things that we need to tackle. I, I have yet to hear an argument why we would not want to give these people their informational sign. Can someone raise an argument that is a non-see? All I'm hearing is non-cater arguments. I'm hearing, I'm hea-
There's already one.
I'm hearing illogical arguments.
Counsel Jordane has the, Counselor, Counselor. Come on, let's, let's, let's have some order here. Counselor Jordane has the, Counselor.
Order.
Counselor. Order, let's go. Counsel Rivera. Counsel Rivera. Let's go. Counsel Rivera. Counselordane has the-
Remember now, yes.
Stop, stop please, let's go, order.
Okay, look at, just because people drive trains through, uh, hop holes in your arguments the size of trains is not a, an argument-
Condescending tone, that's what you're good at.
Hey, counselors, enough. Counselordane has the microphone, let's go.
He always has it.
Let's go.
All day, every day. Now I get to have it.
No, your turn is when, your turn is up.
You, right, everybody makes their arguments, I'm making mine, and I'm, mine are-
Always make an argument, and it's going in circles, we're tired of hearing you.
Counselor.
We're tired of hearing you. Well, you know what? Uh, all I can tell you is, every two years, we have an election. The public gets to decide who they like to hear. And when you keep interrupting people-
Counselor, Counselor, you're out of order. I'm gonna ask that you please stop. I'm asking you please stop to allow the other counselor to speak, please. That's all I'm asking. That's all I'm asking. Thank you.
Right. In, in America, we have that we elect people. And then people make, this is actually getting really interesting, because this has actually transcended anything to do with the Michelle Lane informational sign. We're now getting into an attack on democracy because elected representatives of the people have a right to speak in these meetings, uh, without being shouted down. Um, that's kind of interesting. Um, the point of the matter is, though, we have no reasoned arguments not to support the people of Michelle Lane. Um, they have asked for this, they should receive this, end of discussion. If there's legitimate arguments as to why we shouldn't do it, happy to listen to those. But saying things like, "We've got bigger problems than these poor residents' problems," is not a reasoned argument, in my opinion, to not give them this informational sign. So having said that, I think the case is clear that we should give them, these residents, what they're looking for. Thank you.
Counsel Murphy-Rumbaletti.
Oh my goodness, um, this is embarrassing. I, I'm not... I raised my hand because I was hoping that we could just vote on this and move on to the next thing on the agenda. So I, huh, can I make a motion?
Motion, that's what you say.
On the motion.
I don't know, I don't know how to do this, but can we keep going?
Just say, "On the motion."
On the motion.
Second.
On the motion.
Move the previous question.
On the motion. It was seconded, so now we're going to-
Adults, we got this.
Motion is the, or what? So just remember, you have D and E as a package, of which the motion is to move- On the motion, so all those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed. Now it's, motion is to approve the recommendation to adopt D and E together.
I have a point of clarification question.
Counselor.
It was mentioned that it is an informational sign. Is it or is it not an informational sign?
It is an informational sign.
It's an informational sign, that's all it is. It's all it is. So with that, um, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Yes, we have it. All right, on to-
Motion to take up item nineteen F.
Okay.
All right, nineteen F, Commandant Orange who referred, in order that, uh, handicapped spaces for Brown Ave be deleted. Uh, one is on the west side, as to the point of two eighty-two, two, two hundred and eighty-two feet southerly from Laurel Street. Uh, on the other side, east side, the point eighty feet northerly from Willow Street. Recommend that those be adopted. Counselor Bacon.
Thank you. So these spaces are no longer needed, and we just need to update the ordinance book. So we, um, need to receive and adopt and pass the first reading.
Motion is receive, adopt, pass the first reading, anyone, uh, Counseler Bartley?
Yeah, just, this was filed through me, uh, by the city engineer, based upon his recommendation and his review of the ordinance book. That's how it, that came, came forth. Thank you.
Thanks, Counsel Bartley.
All those in favor?
Aye.
All opposed?
Motion to pass the second reading.
Motion is pass the second reading. All those in favor?
Aye.
All opposed?
Motion that the passage be ordained.
Motion that the passage be ordained, the clerk will call if you vote yes, you're voting for deleting the two.
Maldonado-Valdez?
Yes.
McGee?
Yes.
McGivern?
Yes.
Murphy-Rumbaletti?
Yes.
Israel Rivera?
Yes.
Jenny Rivera?
Yes.
Tomlin?
Yes.
Bacon?
Yes.
Bartley?
Yes.
Givner?
Yes.
Jordane?
Yes.
Eleven yeas.
Your vote, you approve that one, nineteen G.
Mr. President? Counsel Tomlin? Yeah, we, um, could we go back to the beginning of the, the laid-on-the-table items for Counselordane here? Got to get those out of the way.
Yep. So motions, go back and take up items one and two.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? One is a letter, uh, veto from an order amending the zoning ordinance to allow for front yard pools. And then the second one is, um, the Hoyok zoning ordinance for swimming pools in front yards. We all did or should have received the newly updated ordinance as drafted. Did everyone receive that? I heard a yes.
Yes.
With that, so we're taking these up, uh, did I, do we do, all those in favor? All those opposed? So we're taking it off the table. Now it's over to Counselor Bacon.
Thank you, Mr. President. So the, this particular ordinance has had a couple of revisions. So I just want to make sure that we know we're all talking about the same one. And the one that we're talking about now references the Table of Dimensional Regulations at the end of the new language. So if you are looking at that sheet, or if you have reviewed the legal form, that is the one that we are voting on now. And so this was a collaborative process between Legal and our planning department. And my understanding is that Jeff Burcott was very helpful in this regard and that we were able to put together language that keeps the intent of the ordinance and also allows the flexibility that was being sought. So I think we got to a win-win with a lot of collaboration. And so the motion would be to receive and adopt and pass the first reading.
All right, it's a motion to receive, adopt, pass the first reading. Uh, I'll just fill in from there, because I did attend a meeting, uh, with Legal. And this was, Legal reached out to myself, uh, Jeff Burcott, uh, was watching the meeting, uh, the last time, and said he, he also had issues with the o- other version that came out, the last version. And he said, "Really, you should be doing it by setbacks," and the Table of Dimension, as Counsel Bacon has, has pointed out. And then looked at the map of where, you know, side lots are. And if you do the dimension, the way he has, uh, proposed it here, there's no such thing as a pool in a front yard. It actually fixes kind of the glitch that we had, which is if you have a side lot or a corner lot and you're putting in a pool, it is in the backyard. So as Counsel McGivern, if you pointed out, is can, can we draft it in a way that it's just common sense? It's, you're putting a pool in your backyard, you don't have to do a special permit, you have to do this, you have to that. Jeff Burcott stepped in and said, "This is how I think you achieve it." It went back to Legal, uh, I know Legal's on here. And it's been, uh, sent to the mayor as well as to, uh, John Kelly, if I'm saying that right, John Kelly. And everyone is seeing it as, I think we finally got where we're supposed to be.
No more special permits?
No more special permit.
What?
So as newly drafted, I think it accomplishes what the request was. So with that, are there any questions for me? I know, because I sat with Legal and Jeff Burcott, and I want to thank him a lot for the, what he offered to help bring to this. It was, it was very nice of, of him. Counselordane.
Just a question to the President, if I may, is, um, I know the mayor had given us some guidance. I believe we've now addressed the mayor's concerns, so that was all cleaned up and, uh, which was extremely helpful. So we appreciate the mayor's input, and I think this figured it out, right? Between Legal and yourself and, and others, and the mayor's points, uh, got us to a good place.
Right.
Yeah, thank you.
Counsel McGivern.
I think the process and the compromise is the, uh, compromise, or the getting to the common ground is the common ground, is the correct way to go. I just want to make sure that the public hearing covered this language. I just asked that through the chair.
Yeah, we, uh, Jeff asked that in Legal. And Lisa Ball, our city solicitor, said this would have been covered through those meetings.
Put this one in my archives.
I'm, I'm letting you know as I receive it. All right, so, motion is to pass the first reading.
Correct.
All those in favor?
Aye.
All opposed?
Motion to pass the second reading.
Motion is pass the second reading, all those in favor?
Aye.
All opposed?
Motion that the passage be ordained.
Motion that the passage be ordained, the clerk will call if you vote yes, you're voting for the new ordinance.
Maldonado-Valdez?
Yes.
McGee?
Yes.
McGivern?
Yes.
Murphy-Rumbaletti?
Yes.
Israel Rivera?
Yes.
Jenny Rivera?
Yes.
Tomlin?
Yes.
Bacon?
Yes.
Bartley?
Yes.
Givner?
Yes.
Jordane?
Yes.
Eleven yeas. Unanimous vote.
Your vote, you approve that. Back to G. Nineteen G, Commandant Orange who has referred an order, "Do not block the box pavement markings at the intersection of West Franklin and Linden." Um, this has been complied with, so motions, receive, adopt, it's been complied with. Counsel Bacon.
Thank you, Mr. President. Um, so we took up this order, and our engineer had reviewed the area. And we considered it complied with, because upon his review, he said that putting a "do not block the box" would not actually improve the situation there. Um, if the maker of the order wishes to speak further on it. Um, but it was vetted, it was discussed, and that was the conclusion.
All right, anyone further? So motion that this one's been complied with, all those in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? H?
Um, can we take up? Oh, never mind, I'm sorry.
That'll be the next one.
Yeah.
I got you.
No.
Nineteen H. Commandant Orange who has referred, "In order that the city council work with the mayor to establish an ordinance, uh, for flag-raising events, recommend it's been complied with." Counsel Bacon.
Yes, so the motion is to receive and adopt the committee report. In this situation, there were two orders, and one has been sent for legal form. And this one was found to be complied with. There has been an update provided to us by Attorney Bissonette that the court hearing did, was completed relative to the flying of flags. But there will be further guidelines coming. The bottom line relative to the final update is that if the city allows the flying of any flag that is not under governmental flying of flags, but under a freedom of speech flying of flags, any and all flags would have to be allowed. So for the moment, we've called this complied with until such time in the future. Uh, somebody wants to file perhaps a more comprehensive, um, order in that regard.
See, no one, motion is to receive, adopt, that's been complied with, all those in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? So I want suspended rules and take up late file A with it.
Yes.
Some of them.
All those in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? I is, Commandant Orange who has referred that the city council and DPW amend any ordinance to allow road improvements on Whiting Farms Road to allow the left-hand turn by Kmart Plaza. That was gonna be complied with. And A from Counsel Bartley, it's a late file, that the city engineer presented plans to the city council, Public Safety Committee, to improve Lower, uh, Whiting Farms Road for allowing motorists regularly, uh, who ignore the no-left turn by Kmart Plaza. Um, and this was, well, I refer this one to the mayor, city engineer, and public safety.
That's right.
So...
So, well, I-
Because that one's what, being complied with, but you just want to take both and send them to public safety. Is that what you're saying, Counsel Bartley?
If I could?
Yep.
All right, this, we saw, I, I know we had some back-and-forth in the ordinance committee meeting, uh, the other night, and I don't want to step on the chair lady's report, but what, what I'd like, and procedurally, I'm not hundred percent sure we can do this, but I, I hope we can. So what I would like to do is just send nineteen, um-
Aye.
Aye, thank you, back to ordinance, just to leave a table there, and then send my late file, which goes hand-in-glove with that, over to public safety with a copy to the engineer and the mayor, um, for, for a little further discussion, before we get into, you know, whether it's doable. It is really the issue, before we get into any ordinance change or any financial questions, because those would certainly need to be addressed. But I, I don't want to, I just want to let this, and so I had a good conversation with, um, the, you know, the ordinance committee, uh, people on the ordinance committee, also the, um, uh, some of the other members, uh, who, who spoke on this the other night. And I, I wasn't able to stay the whole meeting, just because of my situation, but I, I had a good conversation with them afterwards. And I, I think, once everybody sees that late file, at, you know, as you, as we know, it's posted in the next meeting minutes at the back end. And I think once everybody sees that late file, you know, as we know, it's posted in the next meeting minutes at the back end. Once you read that, you'll get a better feel for what it is I'm attempting to accomplish. But not just me, Mr. President. It's motorists and calls that I get, I've received over the course of a number of years to address it. So if we can make a motion, just kick nineteen I back to ordinance. And we'll take that up and then move that late file A over to public safety. And public safety be the main event at some point when we take that up.
Motion is to, Counsel Vacan.
Thank you. So the issue that was raised in committee was one of safety. And that was back in the day when the left turn was prohibited. And the current issue is also one of safety. So I am very comfortable making a motion to send nineteen I back to ordinance where we will keep it, waiting to see if we get sent any recommendation from public safety. I'm not sure when public safety is meeting again next. Maybe the chair could let us know.
All right, so hold on, what's this? Nineteen I, motion is to refer it back to committee. That was the motion.
That's the motion.
It was seconded. All those in favor?
Aye.
All opposed?
No.
As we have it.
Thanks.
And that late file A be sent to public.
A is to take late file A, send it to the mayor.
We weren't there.
Well, hold on a second, hold on a second. To the mayor, city engineer, and public safety. All those in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? All right. Now we're at nineteen J. Commanding Orders Who Refer That The City Council Establish A Three-Way Stop Sign At The Corner Of Mosher And Center Street. Recommend It's Been Complied With. So it's receive, adopt. That's been complied with. Counsel Vacan.
So in this case, the engineer did go to that intersection. And he did review the area and found that the three-way stop sign would not be warranted for that particular intersection.
Any discussion on this?
So the motions to receive and adopt.
So, Counsel.
I guess I motioned for it to be complied with according to the engineer's recommendations With regards to the DOT regulations and all that stuff. So ultimately, I didn't want to kind of go against it. But Jenny may have something else to say with regards to it. I don't know if she wants to speak, because she kind of co-signed on the order. But that was why I filed for it to be complied with. Didn't want to go against the engineer's recommendation.
Counsel Jenny Rivera.
Thank you. Well, to be honest with you, it doesn't matter what I say. They already made their decision on this. I've been down there in the flat since eighty-seven. Went, gone back, and that section is horrible. Always the cars flying through the stop sign, coming down Mosher Street. But I guess DOT doesn't have record of it. Thank you.
Was there any recommendation other than the stop signs as to what they could do down there?
So, what the engineer report said was, he listed the conditions and criteria for the benefit of the committee. And he looked at the standard of crash history is five or more crashes in a 12-month period. And the police department records indicated that there had been two accidents at that intersection in the five-year period, both in 2017. One was due to the driver not being able to see because of sun in his eyes. And the other was due to the driver on Center Street not stopping at the stop sign. And he also stated that it was not believed that the specified minimum traffic volumes are met In that particular intersection. So those were the main points in his summary to the committee. And the committee voted 5-0 to consider it complied with based on that analysis and review. Thank you.
So Counsel Rivera, how about you and I catch up on this? Because I have a similar issue on Fairfield where, it's true, the law doesn't allow for stop signs under a certain criteria. But there's got to be another way to address the issues that you're having as well as I'm having. And I'm sure others are having in certain areas. I just use Fairfield as an example. So maybe we'll file an order for next meeting to have them in and come in and give other, there's got to be another option for it. So we'll do that.
Sorry. I just had other residents talk to me about two other streets. Samadze is on one of them. Eli Street, they're asking me to put speed humps because it's a dead-end street. But now you're getting people that don't know the area, just come flying by. And then they realize it's a dead-end street, they just stop. The other day, one of the daycare workers was outside with the kids because it's a dead-end street. She had to rush and get the kids out the way. And this guy just flew right there, so.
So why don't we, we'll file an order for next meeting. Orders did their job and it's great. It's more of an issue where we're not going to be in compliance with stop signs because of the rule. The rule's a rule. But we've got to find another way to address the problem. So we'll file an order to follow up with that.
So in fairness, there was a fair amount of discussion in committee That one of the main issues relative to the traffic and the speeding and the erratic driving is a matter of enforcement. You know, and we used to have a dedicated traffic section in our police department, which we haven't had, I guess, now for a while. So anyway, that was also the other part of the discussion.
Okay, perfect. So this is recommended that this, because it's stop signs, be complied with. All those in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? Nineteen K, Commanding Orders Who Refer An Order With Community Support, Create Single Lanes Out Of Two Lanes In Ward Four To Include Beach Between Hampshire, Linden Between Hampden And Sargent, Hampden, Lincoln, Pearl. So this is recommended also be complied with. So receive, adopt. That's complied with.
Yes.
Counsel Vacan.
Thank you. So the motion is to receive and adopt the committee report. And our engineer gave us a general summary and feedback in this regard. Pretty much the bottom line was, this is a pretty complicated thing to look at And would require a study and a lot of different data points. But perhaps Counsel Givener would like to speak to this order in a little bit more depth.
Counsel Givener.
Thank you. I had filed this order in hopes of continuing the dialogue towards solutions Since I always often bring up our speeding issues. I've been in touch with the Bike Ped Committee and have talked to some other leaders in other municipalities Where they're finding different ways to slow traffic. And some of the ways that are being used are turning some of the dual-lane one-ways into single-lane streets With bike lanes and more parking, which are, I mean, people feel differently about extra bike lanes, but they definitely help slow down traffic. And having one lane instead of two lanes also helps. And we know that in some of the more populated areas, and especially in Ward Four, there's not enough parking. And we find that out pretty frequently. Or the parking is dangerous because, you know, cars are flying by and there's pedestrian. So I'm just hoping to continue dialogue. And I think in hearing and listening to issues in Ward One with the speeding, I feel like a lot of these things kind of come together. I'm not asking for stop signs, but I'm definitely looking for solutions, whether they're speed humps or, you know, more parking to slow traffic. I mean, I'd be into almost anything that would help our cause. So I appreciate the time and everyone listening to me rant about wanting people to slow down. And I'm sure we'll get there.
Counsel Tomlin.
Yeah, I go back with Hampden Street, probably about 12, 15 years. I don't know, we tried to do that up in there. We did make some changes up on Hampden by Pleasant. All the way up, we have the bike lanes. We have the parking on both sides of the street. But when you get up to Hampden, you get the two lanes. And now you've got to merge in there by the Dunkin' Donuts. It's a little tough. But I noticed from Pleasant all the way up to North Hampton Street, it's really helped out a lot on Hampden Street Because that's a straight shoot up to ninety-one. And there's other areas of that ward that I see could do some, you know, some narrowing And some maybe, maybe some, you know, the walkways or some of the lines like they did on Pleasant Street, where you put the yellow lines across to slow down traffic because it is a very busy street. But that goes back to Jack Leckah many years. And then we had the issue down in Linden Street coming up Hampden where in actually, that stoplight, you know, now you've got to stop. A lot of people still don't. But you stop for the light, then you can turn right. Because the people on Hampden going up there had an issue trying to get out of the parking lot, out of their driveways. And that's really helped out a lot, too. So I think the ongoing dialogue is important to try to slow down the traffic in all areas that you mentioned here.
So with that, this has been complied with. All those in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? Nineteen L. Commanding Orders Who Refer That The Policy Be Implemented As To If And When The City Vehicles, Including Police Cars, May Be Rented For Non-City-Related Businesses. Recommend It's Been Complied With.
Motion is to receive and adopt the committee report.
Motion is to receive and adopt. Counsel Vacan.
Thank you, Mr. President. On this particular order, we had discussion. Our engineer weighed in on it. And Captain Moriarty from the police department was also in attendance. And it was specifically noted that the, and particularly in relation to the police cars, That the police cars may be used if it is a permitted parade and it is a detail for safety relative to a parade. It was also clarified that in no circumstance under state law, as well as our local ordinances, Can any city government vehicle be used for a political purpose. So that was a matter of clarification that came out in the discussion. And I'll defer to the maker of the order for other comments.
Counsel Bartley.
Yeah, thank you, Mr. President. Take your man, sure. I filed the order only because of what I observed last November. And it come to find out that there's a state law and a local law on point on this. That's great news. So I've asked Attorney Bissonette, and I mean, I know they're busy. But at some point, I'd ask him to send a communication to the city council and to every department head Relative to this particular law, so that we're under no illusions. There's no confusion going forward from election to election, that this would be regularly revisited. So any candidate at any time doesn't get to rent, no matter how noble or how welcome it is by another department head, Rent A Marked Police Car With Uniformed Officers Driving The Marked Police Car In A Political Caravan Or Any Type Of A Political Event Other Than What Was Just Said. So I think it's a great solution. I just think we have to be just vigilant about it. So perhaps when the letter is drafted by the Lot Department, it'll be sent to the clerk. It'll be put in with a regular packet that we get when candidates pull papers. And it'll just be brought up before any department head that has any control of vehicles. And it's just one of those things that I think that's just going to improve government. I don't think there's any blame to be passed around here. It was just an issue that happened. And I think we're going to get past it going forward. Thank you.
Anyone, Counsel Rivera.
If I'm understanding correctly, if you have a permit and you hire the detail, you can still do the parade, right? All right, just making sure.
Yes.
Okay, so this has been complied with. All those in favor?
Aye.
All opposed?
Mr. President?
Oh, sorry. Counsel Malnado Velas.
All right, yeah, I just wanted to clarify, like, I, because I know Chair Vacan mentioned about like political use, But our ordinances don't mention political use. So I was wondering actually if Attorney Bissonette can, in your communication, Just really like specify like which part in the MGLA states that we can use it for political use? Because in our ordinance, it doesn't really state that. It just says, we've just got to make sure we have the permits. So I guess my question, it was following Counsel Rivera's question where in an election year, yes, I can technically ask, And I'd still ask police detail for my order for the parade.
So we'll have, Legal is going to draft a letter as to how it's going to work. And then that will come back to us and then we can...
Yeah, he would cite the criteria. So he would cite to the law.
Yep.
There's no debate on that. So that's what he would do.
Yep, well, we'll get that communication from Legal. Okay? All right. So that was complied with, Iran to nineteen M. Committee on Orders Who Refer An Order To Create An Order That Drivers Altering Their Vehicles, Repeated Backfiring, Disturbing The Peace Will Be Ticketed For Violation. Recommend It's Been Complied With.
Thank you, Mr. President. The motion is to receive and adopt the committee report.
Motion is to receive and adopt. Counsel Vacan.
And we had Captain Moriarty here on this order as well. And it was noted in the discussion that apparently we have already adopted the state general law Because he did note that it is considered a moving violation. And they have it in their ticket books as a fifty, it was either fifty or fifty-five dollar ticket For vehicles being operated in this manner. And this was a very helpful clarification for me. And I think Counsel Puela also had issues in his ward in this regard. Because I've been getting a lot of calls of people racing up and down the streets with this. And so maybe now that it's sort of been brought up again for more discussion, If people call in with the problem, and hopefully the police will be able to come out And perhaps issue some tickets to discourage it. So.
Anyone further? Seeing a motion that this has been complied with. All those in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? And Committee on Orders Who Refer An Order That The Ordinance Committee Meet Regularly For The Application Process And Permitting Process In Hoyok As It Might Compared To The Neighborhood Communities. The Purpose Of The Order Is To Determine Whether Hoyok Is Making More Difficult To Track New Development Projects And Expense Required To The City Areas. Recommend That This Be Given Leave To Withdraw. Counsel Vacan.
Thank you, Mr. President. So the motion is to receive and adopt the committee report. And in this case, this was an older order. It didn't get in the long, long list that we went through in previous months. But I did want to see if there were concerns within the newly formed committee that we should follow up on. Because at least I am still getting feedback from businesses that they're finding things challenging When they're trying to find their way through particularly our complicated zoning. You know, we've had a few of those before us now. But it was felt in committee that the new council that is here now Can take a look at what they're hearing and file orders that are responsive to the needs that we're hearing. So that was why it's recommended to give it leave to withdraw.
Counsel Murphy Rambeletti.
Thank you. And thank you, Counsel Vacan, for that point. One of the orders that I filed at the last meeting, maybe? I have no concept of time. But it was about looking into the special permits that the city council issues. And for me, that's like one small fraction of some of the aspects of permitting That I'd love to take a holistic approach to. So I'm sure in the coming weeks and months, there's similar orders I'll likely be looking into filing. But I think it's worth definitely having a discussion and I'm looking forward to it.
So this one is leave to withdraw. All those in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? Oh, Committee on Orders, in order of discussion for Michelle Lane. So this is kind of like a duplicate.
There were two orders.
Yeah, I filed it again just to, and I didn't realize.
Yes, if I had caught it, I would have put it together with the other one.
That's fine. So nineteen O, because we already did it, I'd say the same motion is that we adopt because we already did it. So all those in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? P is Committee on Orders Who Refer An Order To Review And Amend Section Six Point Four The Zoning Ordinance To Be In Compliance With The Judgment Of Permanent Injunction Ordered By Honorable Mark Mastriani, which was April 12th, 2019. And this is recommended that be adopted. Counsel Vacan.
The motion is to receive and adopt the committee report and pass the first reading?
Its motion is to pass the first reading under discussion.
And everybody should have the legal form in this regard. It has been distributed to the council for a fair amount of time now. And this had been in committee for a long time. And there had been attempts to form a subcommittee to do a more holistic view. But there had been no appetite or volunteers to accomplish that. So my idea at this point was to clean up the language enough so that we would have a legal... So my idea at this point was to clean up the language enough so that we would have a legal sign ordinance on the books. And so Attorney Dagnan was good enough to review the judgment, find the two areas that were found to be out of compliance, and in the legal form that we have, deleting the temporary signs relative to bumper stickers and deleting the temporary signs relative to specific dates. And there is more language than that. Accomplishes that so then our ordinances will be legal.
Anyone on this? No? So a motion is to pass the first reading. All those in favor?
Aye.
All opposed?
Motion to pass the second reading?
Motion is pass the second reading. All those in favor?
Aye.
All opposed?
Motion that the passage be ordained.
Motion that the passage be ordained. The clerk called off. You vote yes, you're voting for the change.
Malnavales?
Yes.
McGee?
Yes.
McGivern?
Yes.
Murphy, Rumbelletti?
Yes.
Israel Rivera?
No.
Jenny Rivera?
Yes.
Tomlin?
Yes.
Bacon?
Yes.
Anderson Burgos? Bartley?
Yes.
Gibner?
Yes.
Jordan?
Yes.
Ten years, one day.
Your vote, you approve that one.
And I wish to thank the ordinance committee for a diligent meeting.
Very good job. There was no finance. There was public safety, but it's laid on the table in committee still. So twenty-two is public service. Twenty-two A, Committee on Public Service who was referred in order from Mayor that a letter appointing Tiffany Curtis of two eighty-five Hampton Street to serve as a member of the Board of Library Directors, which will replace Mr. LaFave, and that will expire February twenty twenty-three. His motion is to receive, adopt, and confirm the appointment. Counselor Tomlin.
Yes, I receive and adopt and confirm the appointment. We had a good meeting last week. Dr. Tiffany Curtis came in through Zoom. She's been in the education system since nineteen ninety-two. She was a school supervisor here in Hoyok Public Schools. Library is very important to her for the inner literacy access to the children is important, and it has, the library agrees accountability and insight for the education of our children. So very well qualified, and just note that it expires in less than a year, and hopefully she'll be back, but she definitely has a lot to bring to this position. It was a great appointment.
All right, so on the confirming the appointment, all those in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? Twenty-two B, Committee on Public Service who was referred in order from the Mayor appointing Sarah Wedeman, hopefully I said that right, from twenty Howard Street to serve as a commission on disabilities. This will expire March twenty twenty-five. Recommended that receive, adopt, and confirm. Counselor Tomlin.
Yeah, receive and adopt and confirm the appointment. We also had Sarah in here on Zoom, the meeting. Very involved. She's been in the city a number of years. She's a good friend of Lynn Horan, who we appointed last month. She works with Bay State Health, and if somebody has experience with a child with cerebral palsy, and she's into the, very much knowledgeable about the American Sign, and she's ready to go. She's been at some meetings, and she's willing to give the time to this position and really make accessibility to all our citizens in this community.
All right, so motion is to confirm. All those in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? C, Committee on Public Service who was referred in order for it to be formed as a tourism advisory committee for the scope of the committee is two, one through nine. This is recommended, been complied with. Counselor Tomlin.
Yeah, the motion, this isn't complied with, and we did make a couple changes of this, a couple amendments. I don't know if they're on this form, but I'll make sure that we'll get them to the Law Department, because we did add a couple things on the back page of the ordinance. I think, believe, one of them was that it would be, the staff of OPED would be under, in charge of this, and that the OPED Director initially would be in charge. And also, the under H after the museum, Wisteriahurst Museum, that a minimum of five with up to eight at-large members will be nominated and recommended by the committee and appointed by the Mayor for a three-year term. I was hoping to get this sent over to ordinance committee. Have this complied with, sent to ordinance committee so they can look it over and draft it. And Counselor Bartley, if you have something to add to that.
Counselor Bartley.
Yeah, so a great summary to the chairman right there. So what I don't see on here are, so just, Mr. President, what we talked about a month or two ago was that we would do the heavy lifting because the ordinance has so many burdens, and this seems like it would fit in this committee. So we worked with the committee and then the OPED Director and then the Law Department to put together a draft ordinance. So the purpose was to work on it in public service, but then, of course, we need to refer it back over to ordinance. But I want to at least bring it up, we agree as a committee to at least bring it up to this body here tonight and just refer it to ordinance. I don't see on here, at least on the written agenda, though maybe it's on twenty-two C as a... It did not make it. So we had added a K...
K and L.
A K and an L. I don't see that. So I would, you know, I would make a motion that we receive and adopt the committee report, which included the K and L, and then we refer the amended draft ordinance over to the ordinance committee for it to take it up and then to take final action.
Its motion is to receive and adopt the committee's amended report and send it over to ordinance?
Yeah, I wish I could read my own writing here, but we definitely have K and an L.
We also have on the back, Counselor Bartley is H. That's with the member, the five up to eight members. We amended that, too. We added that on after Wisteriahurst Museum on the back.
Yeah, that was per the OPED chair, so...
Right, right.
So...
Can't read the writing, or? Counselor Tomlin did point out the three that are missed.
Yeah, three of them. It's K and L and then also H.
So the motion would be in order based on what was read, that we receive, adopt, as amended in the committee, to then refer over to ordinance.
That's good enough. At some point, I'll get my hair and good flicks straightened out, and I'm going to take up an ordinance.
Oh, I just want to add on, too. Also, we had Mr. Vega here, the OPED Director, and we had talked about the PBS video that should be coming up. They were going to add a little bit on to that that we had with Mayor Murphy doing that last year with Dennis Quaid. And we have also the Doors Open, Explore Hoyok, working with the Pioneer Valley Planning Commission. We have Restaurant Re coming up on June sixth to the thirteenth. And this will be sort of like the Bike Bed Advisory Committee. And also by forming this and getting this in ordinance, we'll be able to apply for other grants to the city to help to run these programs, which will be very helpful. And I think he stated the video should be coming out either late summer or fall. And that's the one we had talked about last year with Acting Mayor Murphy, and I think that'll be very interesting, very helpful to our community.
Counselor Bacon.
Just a question through you to the chair. So I'm just wondering if within this advisory committee, it's envisioned at all that as part of promoting tourism, there would be any role relative to cleaning up the city and a campaign, an anti-litter campaign in order to enhance that whole endeavor. Would that fit in here?
I think it definitely would. I think that's important to have that in here and let them know that. But with that, with those groups listed here, I'm sure that that would be one of the primary things. I know we had a talk about that, I think it was last year, last week, was that your committee meeting? About the litter in the city?
Yeah.
And the tunnel down here in High Street, Maple Street, the, you know, everything that's flowing around in here and...
Right, that's not the only thing. They're flowing right out of the window.
Out the windows, I see that often, which isn't good. And I definitely, you can do all you want to market a city, but if you don't have a clean city, it doesn't really help that much.
And I dated myself because I talked about the campaign, "Don't be a litter bug."
Don't be a litter bug, right?
Well, it worked, right? Anyway.
No, I definitely agree with you. That should be definitely a prior, priority.
Thank you.
Counselor Rivera is next.
With regards to the litter piece, I just wanted to recognize that One Hoyok has been doing a keep it clean two K, whatever year it is, since two thousand seventeen, and they actually have been working in collaboration with Parks and Recs and the city since then to try to continue to bring that narrative up front and center. They actually kicked off on Earth Day this year, and they've already done about four or five cleanups. So if anybody would like to reach out to Nairobi Rosa at One Hoyok, she provides the bags and all the equipment for the cleanups and will also, yeah, the grabbers, and will also reach out to the Sheriff's Department and DBW to help pick up bags. This is an initiative they've been doing for quite some time now. Just wanted to recognize them for doing that.
Thank you. Counselor Bartley.
Yeah, just so we're back on point here, the amendment, I just want to make sure that we're stating it right. And I do apologize for not being able to read my own writing, but under the first section, Mr. President, under two dash four A four, we voted to add a K and an L, and then under two dash four A five, we voted to add an H, which that one I can read. That was to say five to eight at-large members appointed to a three-year term. So the motion should be to refer this to ordinance, but also refer this to legal, to institute the language that we approved in committee. So I hope that's the motion that we're voting on.
Yeah, it wasn't comfortable in there because they're going to have to do it with the amendment, so legal have to do it.
Yeah, just going to get posted here, so, thank you.
So with regards to that, so receive, adopt, as amended, to refer over to ordinance. All those in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? Twenty-two D, Committee on Public Service who was referred that the city invite in the heart of Hoyok Project Community Artist and owner of creative art, Yolanda Gonzalez, and her artist to discuss the youth and present them to design for the fire alarm box. Didn't we already do this? No, all right, so motion has been complied with. Counselor Tomlin.
Yes, we had Yolanda in here, Gonzalez, and very great artwork we have in here. I think one was a firefighter, and I think she was going to bring that to the fire department. But we have a few different electrical boxes that she'll want to paint with her group of kids. Painting, you know, there's something on near the Fiesta Cafe. They want to do some towards the end of June. Really want to get the youth involved in this community, which is great. And she's been working on this for a few years, asking for donations. I think she has sets up the paintings and actually, you know, sells them and then helps use that money to get the equipment, the paints, the brushes for the students. But this is sort of like the youth groups, you know, the kids in different areas of the city that need to be involved, just like the sports groups. And it's, she's willing to do this and help out, and we're going to be contacting the Water Department and the G and E and the Fire Department to make sure that this is okay to be done on these boxes and in these areas of the city.
Anyone further? No? So motion is receive, adopt. It's been complied with. All those in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? Twenty-two E, Committee on Public Service who was referred in order at the Mayor and the City Council review and approve the relocation department or departments to the unused space of the tax collector personnel. Recommend that this be given leave to withdraw. Counselor Tomlin.
Yes, this was your order, Counselor McGee, and I believe this came about because at one time, I think, the DOT had used that when they were working on Main Street and Dwight Street. But the office right here, straight through the steps, where it used to be the Tax Collector Personnel Office, I think Mayor Garcia has been using that for his advisory board meetings, and I think they had a big meeting there last week talking about the ARPA fund. So it's ongoing right now if we can use that, but right now it seems apparently that it is being used by the citizens advisory groups, and I think that's a great thing. But as time goes on, I think we could, you know, talk with the Mayor, the council could try to work to see if we can get something in there permanently. But right now it's used for city meetings, which I think is working out well.
Yep, so just on that, and thank you for bringing it up, and I said, yeah, give it leave to draw, because at the time, the space wasn't being used at all. That was after DOT took off and more storage. I have spoken with the Mayor. The Mayor is working on a plan to address spaces and then come back to us, as he has said, for approval. So before moving stuff around or doing anything, he will come back to us and follow the rules that we have in place on that, but he is going to present a plan at some point in time as regarding the office space. Counselor Jordan.
Yeah, I think you've already touched on it, but I did want to just emphasize that we do have ordinances in place about the assignment of offices and the assignment around City Hall that that does require council approval. So, but we do appreciate, looking forward to the plan. And I know there's been some recent health considerations that had to move the assessors office. So I think the Mayor is doing a fine job in, you know, allocating where we're supposed to be with things. But once they figure it all out, to check back in with us would be appreciated. Thank you.
All right, so this is to give leave to a draw. All those in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? Twenty-two F, Committee on Public Service who was referred in order at the Mayor reappointing Kelly Curran to serve as a member of the Library Board. She will serve a three-year term, which will expire February twenty twenty-five. Give leave to withdraw without prejudice. Counselor Tomlin.
Yes, I contacted Kelly Curran. Of course, she's our new Personnel Director, Human Resources, and we felt that being on the Library Board could be a possible conflict. She contacted the State Ethics Commission, and as of this time, we thought it would be best for her to, you know, not get in that position, because, you know, even though she stated that it dearly doesn't affect their pay or anything as being on this board, there could be a possible conflict. So she's going to, at this point, we recommended that she withdraw from that, and hopefully the Mayor will bring another person forward for this position.
All right, so motion is give leave to draw without prejudice. All those in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? All right, so there was no DGNR, no charter rules, and no joint committee. Onto motions, orders, resolutions. First one is from Counselor Gibner, that a handicap sign be placed at nine forty-eight Dwight Street, so that would be to ordinance with a copy to...
To the Disabilities.
To the Disability Commission. All those in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? Twenty-seven is from Counselor Jordan, or that the Forestry Department remove the dead tree in the tree belt at two fifty-one Walnut Street.
Receive and adopt, refer to forestry.
Receive and adopt, send to forestry. All those in...
As a point of information, how long is that list now? I know I've had a tree on it for at least three years.
I do know. I was given an update that the new forestry truck is in.
Oh, that's cool.
So that'll be the next start of trying to tackle these. It took a while because there's on back order and supplies and all that, but I heard it is in.
Oh, well, that's cool.
So hopefully that'll address that question. It'll be soon. All right, so...
I'm glad I asked.
Motion is receive, adopt, send it to forestry. All those in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? Twenty-eight is from Counselor Jordan, that the Mayor please provide funds from the sewer stabilization fund to retain a consulting firm to do a prior five-year fiscal review. So this would go to Finance with regards to the Suez contract.
I did have one quick question. Are we, item forty-six actually complies this order from the Mayor, so he, I guess, came up with the number three hundred thousand. I don't know where that number came from, but is the Chairman seeking to send that to Finance? Yes, Counselor, if I could through the chair. Yes, I believe we did have through the process of meeting with the Mayor his intentions, but I think because it's coming in, we have to adopt it, we should at least vet it through the Finance Committee. I agree. Okay, so I think it would be appropriate to send twenty-eight. And can we suspend the rules to take up forty-six out of order and send forty-six over to both of them to Finance?
Yeah, so motion to suspend rules, take up twenty-eight and forty-six as a package. All those in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? And both are going to go to Finance, and forty-six is appropriation from the Sewer Enterprise Free Cash of three hundred thousand to Professional and Technical Services. So both to Finance. All those in favor?
Aye.
All right. Twenty-nine is from Counselor Jordan, that the Police Chief make speeding prevention on mountain road a priority. The Sydney needs to please put the speed limit machine back on mountain road. A strategic location is dangerous and reoccurring problem that the Chief can further recommend for the council, other measures he would feel helpful. So how about we receive and adopt?
Counselor Jordan?
Yeah, receive, adopt, refer it.
Oh, yeah, I'd like to be honored to have Counselor Bacon as a cosponsor.
Perseverance is a gift.
Yes, and receive, adopt, refer to the Police Chief.
And she's sending a copy of public safety.
A copy to public safety. That sounds like a good idea.
Thanks, Coach. Thanks, Coach.
So receive, adopt, send to the chief, copy to public safety. All those in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? And I added Counsel Vacan. Thirty is from Counsel McGee, order that based on the passage of chapter forty-eight of the Acts of 2022, that section two dash six M be amended to include the city solicitor and superintendent of public works.
Ordinance.
That would go to ordinance. All those in favor?
Aye.
All opposed?
Mr. President, isn't that charter?
I think it's ordinance backing up.
They already fixed the charter.
That was the charter, yeah.
Yeah, now it's also an ordinance.
Ordinance for sure.
Thank you.
Thirty-one for myself also, order at the mayor consider establishing the Hoyok Urban Forestry and Tree Committee. So that would be.
Public.
To, it's actually just sending to the mayor for him to consider it.
Mr. President?
Yep.
First off, I want to commend you on this. Second off, I want to add my name to it. Third off, I would suggest that you send it to DGR and then have a little meeting in DGR and invite the mayor to come in for this. Because, and then if you want to create an ordinance, then you can ship it over there if you need to.
All right, so to DGR, to invite the mayor in. All those in favor?
Aye.
All opposed?
You can include the Conservation Department and.
Yeah, Conservation. That's right. Yoni can go too.
Thirty-two from Counsel McGee, order at the, a capital stabilization count be established, which must be created by the end of fiscal twenty-two in order to have it active for fiscal year twenty-three. So this has to be done.
It's got to go ordinance.
Prior to.
Um, I, I think these actually are going to be thirty-two and thirty-three to finance because these are creations under five B. So these are actually going to be us establishing new stabilization accounts under the statute.
They are.
Yeah, so I, typically we handle all that under finance. Those aren't ordinances.
We don't have.
No, they're, they're the election, the council needs to vote to create these two new stabilization funds.
This comes from Tanya as a, if you want these accounts in order to put money in to start using next year, it has to be done before.
That's right. That's right.
So you have to.
But if we can do it, I just thought it had to come through ordinance, but if it can go through finance.
Yep. I understand it was through finance.
Okay.
But if need be, we'll.
I'm good with that.
We can rush. I just want to make sure we know there is a timeline here.
Timeline, yeah.
I don't think they're really controversial, to be honest.
No, they're not.
I hope not because I'm about to make two motions and the second one scares me.
Uh-oh.
Yeah.
No, after this, after this.
Okay, so motion is send thirty, suspend the rules, take up thirty-two and thirty-three as a package. All those in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? Thirty-two and thirty-three to finance. All those in favor?
Suspend the rules for thirty-four and thirty-five as a package?
Second.
And adopt.
All right, so motion is to take up thirty-four and thirty-five as a package. All those in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? They're stuck together, there we go. So motion would be to receive, adopt, pass the first reading. Counsel McGivern.
These are the orders that we adopt just about every meeting now for purposes of accounting and keeping accountable our public safety officials who are paid the salary they have coming to them, but for a sometimes short period, sometimes longer period, injured on duty. So we just pay them from a different account.
All right, so first one thirty-four is seventeen thousand, three dollars, forty-one cents for, that's the police department. And thirty-five is four thousand, one hundred sixty, eleven cents, and that's the firefighters injured on duty. For the police, it's six. For fire, it's two. So Counselor Rivera.
I just have one question for point of clarification. Does the, the injured on duty account, does that carry over to the new fiscal year or does that start over?
Starts over.
Starts over.
All right, thank you.
All right, so pass the first reading. All those in favor?
Aye.
All opposed?
Motion to pass the second reading.
Motion to pass the second reading. Clerk Corcoran, if you vote yes, you're voting for thirty-four and thirty-five.
Waldenado Vales?
Yes.
McGee?
Yes.
McGivern?
Yes.
Murphy Rombaletti?
Yes.
Israel Rivera?
Yes.
Jenny Rivera?
Yes.
Coleman?
Yes.
Vacan?
Yes.
Bartley?
Yes.
Gibner?
Yes.
Jordaine?
Yes.
Eleven years.
If you vote you approve those two.
President, if I could make a motion to suspend the rules to take up a package beginning with item number thirty-six.
Yep.
Minus item number forty-six and continue until item number sixty.
Wow.
All right. And motion, Charles, to send them to finance?
With a. Motion is to send them to finance while the president is doing by himself pulling those orders. Finance will be meeting on May 23rd, May 24th, May 25th, May 26th, May 27th, and possibly Saturday morning, May 28th. I'm just kidding. We, we have a meeting scheduled for May 23rd. We're not going to get them all done. We have another meeting scheduled in June and I'll speak with the members about possibly scheduling, if needed, a third meeting. Almost everything coming in that the president is looking for is, needs to be adopted before the end of the fiscal year, which means we have until June 21st. The department heads have been warned that they need to have everything into us before June 7th to allow us time to do this. I hope that they heeded that warning and this is it for the, for end of the year transfers. But there, there's a lot going on, including some stuff with the schools, including some orders that we've been waiting for feedback from the auditor and the mayor in terms of for, finance forecasting. So we're going to do our, we're going to do our best. We'll get, you know, some recommendations back to the full city council, but I just ask everyone to, to bear with us.
All right, so motion to suspend the rules, take up thirty-six to sixty.
Appreciated reading as well, Mr. President.
And Counsel Jordaine said read it all, all of it. I would not.
Just the opposite.
We want to hear everything.
If I could just, and I, I want to make sure people understand that this is very unusual. Part of this is because Free Cash didn't get certified to last month, so late in the year. Never heard of that, you know, and that's, I, I hope that never happens again because these things usually would come in piecemeal for the last six months of the, the fiscal year.
All right, so, so first, suspend rules, take up as a package. All those in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? Thirty-six is, and I'll go quickly, one million, five hundred ninety-one dollars, two hundred ninety-one dollars, five hundred ninety-one thousand, two hundred ninety-one dollars from Free Cash to the cannabis stabilization. Fifty thousand dollars from Free Cash to Capital Stabilization Fund. A hundred and thirty thousand from Free Cash to Mayor's Contracted Services. Four hundred and ten dollars from Office, Office Manager to overtime WWTP clerks. Two hundred and forty thousand from Free Cash to Mayor's Contracted Services. Twenty-five thousand, five hundred from Free Cash to Computer Professional Services. Sixty-eight thousand from Free Cash to Professional Engineering Services. A hundred and seventy thousand from Free Cash to Professional Services outside council. Ten thousand from Free Cash to System Hardware, City Council. Two hundred and ninety-three thousand from Sewer Enterprise Free Cash to Stabilization Fund. Forty-five thousand from Cannabis Stabilization to Planner Two. Twelve thousand, three hundred and thirty-eight dollars from two items to Pay Waste Recycling Coordinator. Seven hundred and eighty-four dollars from Equipment Repair to, to other items for the police mechanic. A hundred and, or twelve thousand, one dollar from Pay HMEO to overtime forest and overtime. Four thousand, one hundred ninety-five dollars from HMEO to various line items. Twelve, twenty-one thousand, seven hundred and twenty dollars from power shovel operator to overtime snow removal overtime. Five thousand from Pay Office Manager to part-time clerk. Two thousand, five hundred seventy-five dollars from building maintenance to custodian. One thousand fifty from Office Manager to Outdoor Works. Eight thousand, six hundred from Labor Refuge to overtime. Thirty-one thousand from two items to police, R and M Police Station, repair and maintenance. Then twenty-two thousand, five hundred from various vacation buybacks, clothing allowance to snow removal services. Two hundred and thirty-one thousand from several line items to snow removal services. And then finally, sixty, seventeen thousand, five hundred from Parking Control Officer to Snow Removal Services. All those to finance. All those in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? Now let me catch up. All right, sixty-one from Counsel Murphy Rombaletti, order that the city council vote to amend section seven point ten to include the following definition, which reflects the language in the Camps Control Commission. So that would go to.
Ordnance.
Ordnance. All those in favor?
Aye.
All opposed?